Okay, let's call this to order. It is eight oh five.
Roll call please.
Yes.
Ms. Chesney.
Here.
Ms. Williams.
Here.
Ms. Miller.
Here.
Ms. Kearns.
Here.
Ms. Whitney Lanning.
Yes, Frau Major.
And Mr. Richmond. Okay, I'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, approval of the agenda is their motion. Thank you, Jennifer. Thank you, Kim. One more motion in a second. Would you pause the vote, please?
Ms. Miller.
Yes.
Ms. Williams.
Yes.
Ms. Chesney.
Yes.
Ms. Kearns.
Yes.
Ms. Lanning.
Yes.
And the motion passes. All approved. Items under discussion. Dr. McInnes.
Test, 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 test. Okay. Thank you. Our first item up to...
Second. Who's signing?
Hello? Okay, our first agenda item is our continuous school improvement plan. You should have that in your packets. It's also attached to Assembly for the Public. This is a five-year plan, and it represents the collective feedback that we have had throughout our community, starting with Vision Forward in 2022, and then also going through the process of our Portrait of a Graduate last year, and then stakeholder feedback through surveys and focus groups this year. So this is the culmination of a lot of different voices in our community, and it will serve as our five-year plan per board policy. So hopefully you had an opportunity to look at that. We do have our new mission, vision, and values in here, and our plan from DESI and MSBA has strongly suggested that our two rocks be academics for our APR and then school finance. So we knew those two would emerge from the feedback, and then they also have resulted in additional areas. So we have five key priorities. That first one is effective teaching and learning, and that's going to impact our HR, or I'm sorry, our APR. And then we have school finance, hopefully with the goal of getting back to 20% per board policy. Our third priority is about recruiting and retaining high-quality staff. Our fourth priority is about facilities, also goes back to Vision Forward rightsizing the district and also expanding early childhood programs. And there's also a focus on school safety in collaboration with first responders, law enforcement, et cetera, to keep our buildings safe. Priority five is about communication, climate, and culture, and we've been working on some of those pieces to make sure our community is looped in with all of this facilities discussion. So this has been vetted through our regional rep, through DESI, Nancy Greeley, and we have made sure that we are compliant with Senate Bill 681. There are specific components that we must have in our CSEP regarding literacy, and so there's quite a bit on the teaching and learning side in this CSEP, primarily with early elementary and literacy, and also a focus on chronic absenteeism for those early elementary grades. So we hope that this is a living document, and we also hope to discuss this quarterly with our board and be monitored through a newly created data dashboard. So that is something we are working on right now as a piece of transparency and accountability. If you have any questions about this whatsoever, I'd be happy to answer those.
Yes, I appreciate the effort and collaboration that's gone into putting this together, and I'm thankful that I was able to be a part of that, just as one ingredient, and no more than one ingredient. But one of the things that I think for the board, particularly for the community, is for us to make sure that this is really about as important as anything that we do, the CSEP. I mean, we spend a lot of time right now talking about facilities and finances, but this is about educating our children and how we're doing that. I'm really keyed into Dr. Stewart's report every time. Somehow, we need to make sure that we don't, as we start to present results to that, that we watch out that it's not this overwhelming document that becomes unmanageable in terms of how do we read and really scorecard ourselves on how we're doing? And if we're not careful, there'll be so many items here that we'll end up checking a box, did that, did that, and there will be very little way to really verify that we're making a difference and making improvement. And so kind of my challenge, maybe it's because of myself, is we need to try to see how do we compress portion of this without losing it? I think this stuff's all good without losing it. How do we compress it in a way that say, these are things that we're doing to make a difference? For example, I think the weekly reports on attendance that you were sending in this are right in front of us every single time, and it's easy to look and see, and it shows what it was on this week of school all the way, all the way through. And you may have to change that format a little bit, but we need to make sure that this isn't something that we just all shake our heads and say yes, but this has got to be some of the meat of what we do for our district. So I think we need to figure out how do we do a scorecard of this meeting.
I so appreciate you saying that. This is the foundation for all of our work. This is why the CSEP is listed first on the work session agenda. Everything else should fall back to your CSEP. And so this is really the meat and potatoes of our work, and I am very proud of this work because it is the voice, a collective voice of our community, truly. And I do think in the past, we have created some CSEP highlights for our board and our community, but this has every piece, every action step. Every action step in here that we will have as a progress monitoring piece. And I do think that data dashboard will help so that we can kind of track where we are at. Thank you for saying that. The other piece I wanted to add to this is the student voice. So we held some student sessions, and what came out of that is students want hope, students want opportunities for real-world learning, they want relevant learning experiences, and so I don't want to underestimate their voice in this because there are some pieces about real-world learning and setting them up for careers, some of that exposure to what they could do after high school. There were some concerns that our kids are unsure what they want to do when they're in high school, and I think for those of us who are in buildings, we have seen that. And so it was just reassuring for our kids to be able to articulate that they need help in that area, to know what they want to do beyond high school. So yeah, it's a very collective piece of all voices, from teachers to administrators to parents, business leaders, students, just community members, the whole gamut. This will be an action item at the October board meeting, so if you have any questions, happy to answer those.
One of the things that I, you know, when we talk about finance, we've talked a lot about projections, and this plan goes from 25 to 30, and we've talked about how different decisions and different things within the school district affect the finances. One of the things that we've talked, I mean, obviously, we've talked a lot about buildings and consolidations. My, so I guess my question is, with the CSEP, once we, if we decide to move forward with closures and consolidations, does there need to be an acknowledgement of how this perhaps changes or is impacted over that five-year term or that five-year period, just with, you know, kids moving, or if we grandparent them, or if we see larger school sizes, transportation, all those things? Does this need to be, does that, do those changes need to be a consideration in this plan?
Are you saying like to be edited as we make decisions?
Yeah, and I guess that's, you know, we've heard a lot of people say tonight, and I don't have, I have them all written down, but, you know, as we make decisions, we haven't, I don't think we've teased out really how that's going to impact staffing, or where exactly the staffing is going to be, or how many sections there's going to be at each school, or, you know, the number of certified versus not certified staff, where we will end up. And I would tend to believe that those decisions are going to affect our academics. And so I guess my question just is, as we make those plans, do we need to go back and modify this?
So your CSEP is usually modified every year. You look at that every year, and you can edit that as needed. So I would suggest keeping with the action steps that we have listed right now. As far as school finance goes, the big goal is getting back to that 20%, and I think as long as we have that as part of our data and monitoring system, then that's something we'll be able to continuously track, all in effort to get to that 20% board policy. That's a huge piece on the school finance. I mean, there's others that are more systems, processes related, as far as turning things in on time, and having a better system for federal programs. All of those kinds of pieces are in here. So I don't think it would have to be edited.
I think my bit, so I think some of the, so I'm looking back at the people that spoke, and one of the things that stuck out to me was Ms. Poe talked about how Fields' APR is high, and we've heard about how Bessie's scores are high, and just being mindful of those changes that we make, how Ms. Stewart is nodding. So I guess that's my point, is just being able to continue and track and make changes, that's what we need to.
Yes, this is a living document, if that's what you mean.
For sure.
Any other questions or feedback on the CSEP? Okay. Thank you.
I know I only kind of glanced at it and everything, and so if I have other additional questions, I can just mail them to you, and I know that Edward is listening. Maybe people can hear me though, pretty loud, and so if there's any questions after the fact, you know.
Sure, I'll add this one last piece because I do network with districts in the Kansas City area, and other school districts typically contract out for their CSEP, which can come to the tune of $16,000 to $25,000 are some of the numbers that I've received from Kansas City districts, and Flat County, Xellos Springs, Park Hills, some of those folks have utilized those external services, so I'm super proud that we've also saved our district some of those funds with doing this internally.
Thank you, Dr. McInnes. Do there are no additional questions? Did you have questions?
My comment on that is I 100% agree, but not because of the money, because it's our plan. And, you know, we're talking tonight and heard from the community about we need a plan for our community and our schools, and this is what we're talking about. And so I am excited for us to work on that, and I want us, the longer I continue to say that, I want us just to be emphasized in that and taking pride and giving our community pride on the results that we're seeing from those actions.
Okay, number two, the draft of the facilities plan.
Yes, so Ms. Williams requested for this item to be on the agenda, and it is a rough draft, very rough. It is a skeleton draft of a facilities plan because we need to know the direction of where we are going before we can build out our one to five years, six to 10 years, 11 to 15 years, long range. Either one of these options, or if the board decides to entertain a third option, that's going to drastically change the trajectory of our facilities plan. So once we have some of those decisions made, then we will be able to build this out long term. So it is literally just an introduction to our district, and then you can see on the last page, I think it's 15, where we start the long-range process. So one to five years and what that looks like, and building that out all the way to 15 years, that we just need to know that direction.
So we, sorry, we lost this. So we have the hearings, or the hearing, we have the public input. What are, we have two plans. One, I understand, has, I'm not, we'll re-ask, we're all here. What is, what are you all recommending between those two plans?
We are not there yet. We're waiting for the town hall, and then we are going to reconvene as a district leadership team and decide after we hear from all the board.
So I just kind of worry about, I worry that we put together two plans that is really pitting people against each other. I would like for us to be, I personally would like for us to be able to see that this is a plan that we think is better for the community, or we think is better physically, or how it impacts people, because the longer we have just these two plans, you have staff that are like, don't close my school, but then that means that another school has to close. So I worry about that. I also just would like to know, are we going to entertain the Plan E from the community? I think this would probably be the point that we need to decide whether or not that's going to come in, because if we wait much longer, we're going to, we're a month behind.
Well, because a couple members of the board approached me, asking about information about the plan. I've asked the creators of this extra plan if they're able to email it to me, and then I'm able to get it, you know, to everybody else. I've even said if they're able, you know, to give it to the district and then, you know, over to us. I mean, I just want everybody to be able to look at all options. And then, because it appeared as if members of the board are interested, I'll get the information and then I'll be able to pass it on. I'm supposed to get it either tonight or...
Well, I thought, I thought we already got it.
Got what?
The Plan E. So I saw an email from Jeff Lee, and then I've been asking him questions, and my thing is this, I've heard...
Did he give it to everybody?
I don't know. I don't know if he put it on BCC, or I'm surely I'm not the only person that he sent it to. But my point is, it, to me, it can be easily ruled in or ruled out. Like if our staff look at it and say, these numbers are wrong, or it doesn't impact fewer staff and students, and it doesn't save more money, then I'm fine with ruling it out, but I do think it deserves some sort of at least initial assessment.
I have a question about it. Will that Plan E, will that plan be able to give us the exact same figures that are on this pamphlet in order, if we're going to add a third option on here? In my mind, I've got to be able to look at all three on exactly the same playing field.
Yeah, and...
Yeah, so is that plan going to affect the number of staff, law, everything that's in this pamphlet? Because otherwise, it becomes an unfair or unequal.
Oh, for sure. Right. Well, I was going to ask if we're able to get the plan, give it to the district, I mean, are we able to get that information?
Well, and I, so I've sent emails back and forth to Mr. Lee, I don't even know if he's still there, and just ask, you know, some questions, but I mean, it's going to be hard if they don't have, they don't have access to all the tools. So my thing is, if we could just get that plan and do an assessment of it, and then it can be ruled in, or it can be easily ruled out, in my mind.
I think you've got to be careful. We need to make sure that when you look at a separate plan that comes from outside, you know, are all the enrollment figures correct, you know, or does that plan overstay our high school population by 150? Do the numbers at the elementary actually match what is in our GIS system for the actual physical address? All those things have been drilled down, so I would rather see the board say, hey, we have a two-high school model for Plan Two, we have a two-high school on Plan Seven, we would like to look at a three-high school model and actually use the data tools that we have to give you numbers for that and what the financials look like, if you wanted to look at that, because that's, I feel like what everybody's talking about with Plan E is the three high schools. I could be wrong. You know, it did have some other closures in there. I think it was two or three buildings. I didn't see it in depth, but looking at it quickly, I feel like if I misread the room, I could be, but that it keeps all three high schools open. So I'd rather operate from that standpoint, so that way we can use our GIS system, look to see what that looks like, we can compare it to the others, if that's the will of the board. But I'd like to look at it more that way than just subplanning, you know, a random plan in the middle of the two that are there.
Okay, I like that idea. Are we able to do that?
Well, I'm just going to say, I've seen the overwhelming response on that plan. I mean, everybody, this town, I feel like, has been so divisive, one, two, and three high schools, that tonight, this last week, that's all I've heard, is everybody coming together, wanting to look at this plan. So I think with all the research that everybody's done, they put the time into it, I think it deserves to be looked at.
I would agree with that, and the numbers are already there. I mean, if we're able, you know, to look at the plan...
The enrollment numbers are not correct on that plan.
Well, well, it's what I was going to say. If you're able to look at the plan and you're able to put the correct information, or look at the plan as a guide in order to keep the three schools, is there time to make a new plan?
Absolutely. That's what I'm trying to gather from the board, is it the three high schools that you, that people liked about Plan E? Was it something else? I feel like reading it, it was the three high schools, and then we can give you the data for that, with the financials behind it, things like that. It'll take some time. I mean, there's a lot of time to go through all the staffing to figure out how that even does. I mean, it just does. But that's where I'm trying to gauge, instead of just slopping Plan E in there, is it the three-high school piece of that that is liked about it, and then we can dive deeper?
It's the majority of it, yes, and so...
If there's other pieces of it that are liked that would be evaluated, that would very be helpful as well for us to dive deeper into that.
I think it's the overwhelming response of looking into the elementary schools as well, and looking at the equality within the middle schools.
Yeah, I mean, if we can, and even if, you know, I'm not saying that that plan is perfect. I'm not saying that I would even support that plan, but I do think we've talked about two high schools, we've talked about Bessie, we've talked about Fields, we've talked about Lester, we've talked about these things. If there's a community group that's taken the time to put board in plan, this is the only, I'm not saying that every, everybody that sends us a spreadsheet, we go down that rabbit hole. This has been a concerted effort from this same group for years, so let's either look at it and say, yes, it's feasible, or no, it's not feasible, and either move forward with it or not.
Dr. Hedgesworth, I'd like you to be able to plug the numbers in through that.
Sure, and, you know, I just looked for the high school population. I did not look closely at the other numbers, so those could be correct, but I did notice on the high school population, it was overstayed by 150. And some of those, they might have actually the same data, you know...
You know, we're talking tonight and heard from the community about we need to, we need a plan for our community and our schools. And this is what we're talking about. And so I am, I'm excited for us to work on that. And I want us, I, the only reason I continue to say that, I want us just to be emphasized in that and, and, and taking pride and giving our community pride on the results that we're seeing from those actions.
Okay, number two, the draft of the facilities plan.
Yeah, so Ms. Williams requested for this item to be on the agenda. And it is a rough draft, very rough. It is a skeleton draft of a facilities plan because we need to know the direction of where we are going before we can build out our one to five years, six to 10 years, 11 to 15 years, long range. Either one of these options, or if the board decides to entertain a third option, that's going to drastically change the trajectory of our facilities plan. So, once we have some of those decisions made, then we will be able to build this out long term. So, it is literally just an introduction to our district. And then you can see on the last page, I think it's 15, where we start the long-range process. So, one to five years and what that looks like, and building that out all the way to 15 years. But we just need to know that direction.
So, we, sorry, we lost this. So, we have the hearings, or the hearing, we have the public input. What are, we have two plans. One, I understand has, I'm not, we'll rehash, we're all here. Um, what is, what are you all recommending between those two plans?
We are not there yet. We're waiting for the town hall. And then we are going to reconvene as a district leadership team and decide after we hear from all the board.
So, I, I just kind of worry about, I worry that we've put together two plans that is really pitting people against each other. I would like for us to be, I personally would like for us to be able to see that this is a plan that we think is better for the community, or we think is better physically, or how it impacts people. Because the longer we have just these two plans, you have staff that are like, don't close my school. But then that means that another school has to close. So, I worry about that. I also just would like to know, are we going to entertain the Plan E from the community? Um, I think this would probably be the point that we need to decide whether or not that's going to come in. Um, because if we wait much longer, we're gonna, we're, we're a month behind.
Well, because, um, a couple of members of the board approached me, asking about information about the plan. I've asked the creators of this extra plan if they're able to email it to me. And then I'm able to get it, you know, to everybody else. I've even said if they're able, you know, to give it up to the district and then, you know, over to us. I mean, I just want everybody to be able to look at all options. And then, 'cause it appeared as if members of the board are interested, I'll get the information and then I'll be able to pass it on. I'm supposed to get it either tonight or any morning.
Well, I thought, I thought we already got it.
Got what?
The, the Plan E. So, I, I saw an email from Jeff Lee, and then I've been asking him questions. And my thing is this, I, I've heard-
Did he give it to everybody?
I don't know. I, I don't know if he put it on BCC, or I, I'm surely, I'm not the only person that he wanted to send it to. Um, but my, my point is, it, to me, it can be easily ruled in or ruled out. Like, if, if our staff look at it and say, these numbers are wrong, or it doesn't impact fewer staff and students, and it doesn't save more money, then I'm, I'm fine with ruling it out. But I do think, um, it deserves some sort of, at least, initial assessment.
I, I have a question about it. Will that Plan E, will that plan be able to give us the exact same figures that are on this pamphlet in order, if we're going to add a third option on here? In my mind, I've got to be able to look at all three on exactly the same plan.
Yeah, and, yeah.
Yeah, so is that plan going to affect the number of staff, law, law, everything that's in this pamphlet? Because otherwise, it becomes an unfair-
Oh, for sure.
Or an unequal-
Well, well, I was going to ask if we're able to get the plan, give it to the district? I mean, are we able to get that information?
Well, and, and I, so I've sent emails back and forth to Mr. Lee, I don't even know if he's still there. Um, and just ask, you know, some questions. But, I mean, it's going to be hard if they don't have, they don't have access to all the, the tools. So, so my thing is, if, if we could just get that plan and do an assessment of it, and then it can be ruled in, or it can be easily ruled out, in my mind.
I think we've got to be careful. We need to make sure that when you look at a separate plan that comes from outside, you know, are all the enrollment figures correct? You know, or does that plan overstate our high school population by 150? Do the numbers at the elementary actually match what is in our GIS system for the actual physical address? All those things haven't been drilled down. So, I would rather see the board say, hey, we have a two-high school model for Plan Two. We have two-high school on Plan Seven. We would like to look at a three-high school model and actually use the data tools that we have to give you numbers for that and what the financials look like then, if you wanted to look at that. Because that's, I feel like what everybody's talking about with Plan E is the three high schools. I could be wrong. You know, did have some other closures in there. I think it was two or three buildings. I, I didn't see it in depth. Um, but looking at it quickly, I feel like if I, I misread the room, I could be, but that it keeps all three high schools open. So, I'd rather operate from that standpoint, um, so that way we can use our GIS system, look to see what that looks like, we can compare it to others, if that's the will of the board. Uh, but I'd like to look at it more that way than just sub-planning, you know, a random plan in the middle of the two that are there.
Okay, I like that idea. Are we able to do that?
Well, I'm just going to say, I've seen the overwhelming response on that plan. I mean, everybody, this town, I feel like, has been so divisive on two to three high schools that tonight, this last week, that's all I've heard, is everybody coming together, wanting to look at this plan. So, I think with all the research that everybody's done, they put the time into it, I think it, it deserves to be looked at.
I would agree with that. And the numbers are already there. I mean, if we're able, you know, to look at the plan-
The enrollment numbers are not correct on that plan.
Well, well, it's what I was going to say. If, if you're able to look at the plan and you're able to put the correct information, or look at the plan as a guide in order to keep the three schools, is there time to make a new plan?
Absolutely. That's what I'm trying to gather from the board. Is it, is it the three high schools that you, that people liked about Plan E? Was it something else? I feel like reading the room, it was the three high schools. And then we can give you the data for that, with the financials behind it, things like that. It'll take some time. I mean, there's a lot of time to go through all the staffing to figure out how that even does. I mean, it just does. But, that's where I'm trying to gauge, instead of just slopping Plan E in there, is it the three-high school piece of that that is liked about it, and then we can dive deeper?
It's the majority of it, yes. And so-
If there's other pieces of it that are liked and would be evaluated, that would very be helpful as well for us to dive deeper into that.
I think it's the overwhelming response of looking into the elementary schools as well, and looking at the equality within the middle schools.
Yeah, I mean, if, if we can, and even if, you know, I'm, I'm not saying that that plan is perfect. I'm not saying that I would even support that plan. But I do think we've talked about two high schools, we've talked about Bessie, we've talked about Field, we've talked about Wester, we've talked about these things. If there's a community group that's taken the time to put forward a plan, this is the only- I mean, I'm not saying that every, everybody that sends us a spreadsheet, we go down that rabbit hole. This has been, um, a concerted effort from this same group for years. So, let's either look at it and say, yes, it's feasible, or no, it's not feasible, and either move forward with it or not.
Dr. Hedges, of course, I'd like you to be able to plug, plug the numbers in through that.
Sure. And, you know, I just looked for the high school population. I did not look closely at the other numbers, so those could be correct. But I did notice on the high school population, it was overstated by 150. And some of those, they might have access to the same data, um, you know, that we have. So, understood. But that's why I wanted to guess, you know, from the 10,000-foot level, what was liked about that? Was it the three high school? Was it certain elementaries that closed, not closed? I know Webster was on that list. And so, that's what I wanted to get, because I, I didn't want to bring data to the board and then you say, you missed the mark. Here's what we liked about Plan E. These specific things, we want you to compare to the other Plan Two and Seven. And then that way, we can fully vet that idea as well.
And I, and I'm just seeing it briefly, because I've been doing other things. But my, when I glanced at it, and maybe I didn't look at it closely enough for a moment of your time, does it include adding a third early childhood center?
I don't remember one, but please, I, I, like I said, I didn't-
Yeah, that's what I'm not sure either. But that would be one of my concerns, because both of the other plans do add that-
Can you even do that?
As extra academic support for children. So, that would be something I would be curious about.
Yeah, I also don't know if it creates a model to have seven A three, only at the middle school.
Right.
I didn't see the information anywhere there.
I think that's my disadvantage, is I feel like I don't know what's in that plan. And part of these things were talked about and decided before we had the last bond issue, that we were, we were heading this way. And I'm not ever opposed to saying, hey, let's look at alternatives. But I, I don't want to, I don't want to open that door for every, every idea that might come along, my, my own included, and put an unnecessary burden on the, on the administration. At least right now, we've indicated that we're having an open meeting tonight. We discussed that option, because that option hadn't been on the table. Now, we're going to have another one next Tuesday. And is it going to be baked out enough to be on the table? Um, and then, at the board meeting on the 27th, the intention was we'd vote on a plan. And are we, you know, sitting here tonight, that's two weeks from now, are we going to be able to get that information and then digest that and make a decision on that different plan? Even though, um, right now, it falls in the category of status quo, to me. And that, that part was vetted already, the status quo was not in the works. And so, I'm okay if there's an overwhelming feeling, but I haven't seen the plan good enough to say, I think it's a viable plan that we should actually go back and pause and reconsider. I've heard a lot of things from the public tonight about saying, don't be afraid to pause. And I'm not. I just want to make sure that, I also heard them talk about that we need to move with urgency, because there's a lot of pieces to be put together. So, I, I don't want us to be distracted. If the administration feels like they can get that put together, I'd love to look at it. But if not, then we just need to move forward. That's where I'm coming from personally.
Are we able to get the information?
I haven't reviewed the plan either. Uh, I don't think we have any problem taking a look at it. Can we develop it to that extent? I don't know that we would have that timeframe to be able to do that. But here's what I'm going to say, none of these plans are going to be perfect. All of these plans are going to upset people. We've been talking about reconsolidation, rightsizing our district for many, many years. And it feels like we could be kicking the can down the road a little bit. I just think we have to be very careful. If we're opening up another plan, what do we do when someone else comes out with their plan and another plan? And then, before you know it, it's December, and we're going to hold off another year. And so, at first glance, we can look at that. I, I think the capacity piece would be something that would be of value of determining that, um, along with staffing, operational costs. So, we could do that, um, to say it will be to that extent next Tuesday, probably not. But I think we could give you enough information to where you could decide if this is something we strongly want to consider or not.
Yeah, and that's, I mean, that's all I'm asking for, is that, you know, it's not, um, so we all received this email with the attachment on October 10th to 4/26. And then I had asked some questions, so I, I can't pull up whether or not it had the attachment on it or not. That, that's all I'm asking. I, I want change, and I understand the, the urgency that we need for change. But this is also a big decision. And, and this group, again, this is not just somebody put together some things and sent us an email. This group has been operating for several years. They've developed a, a group. They've, they've been interviewed by the news media. I mean, they, they seem like a, um, at least in somewhat organized effort. So, that's all I'm asking, is that we can, we can easily say yes or no. This is so far off, this is not even something we can consider.
We can do that. I think we can do that by next Tuesday. And like I said, it may not be that detailed, but I think we could give you some data on what we think about that. Once we have the plan, if somebody can send that to our team. Anything else as far as facilities goes? I know there was some conversation, um, about boundaries. And so, is there anything else from public comment that you want us to revisit? I'd love to have that now before the town hall.
One of the things that we, I feel like we've touched on, and I'm not sure, we've got, obviously, a ton of emails, I'm not sure that we have teased out or really discussed with the Benton High plan. So, for sure, that is, the model that we're looking at is a ninth-grade center. Am I correct in saying that? Okay.
Yes. So, and the only reason I'm considering it a ninth-grade center is because our ninth graders would be in that site. Um, and, um, so when you look at that, Dr. Williams and Dr. Davis and myself sat down and said, what courses can we offer at High that concentrates our ninth grade? Um, and then, what courses do we need to offer over at Benton to ensure that our kids are still engaged and love coming to school? Uh, for example, like woodworking and metalworking, those courses, they have to be offered over at Benton. We want our freshmen to come to those courses. That's the whole reason they're coming to school. They love, um, that work. Um, but as far as, like, what we did is we looked at the whole freshman's schedule and said, this is what is best academically for our freshmen, regardless of whatever, um, decision is made. There was already in works, um, of the redesign of the high school coursework.
So, I think, so my, my concern remains about the Benton High model is the travel between the two buildings, for, for staff and for students. That, and, and I understand that there are other places that do that, but that, that building, High, has no elevator, correct? All right. Right. So, it's a, it's a large building, it's got, um, a lot of stairs. So, for me, I'm still worried about that ADA accessibility. I, I personally am not worried about the, the geography, um, because what I keep hearing about the geography between Central and Lafayette is that it doesn't set us up for a new high school in the future. But we've shown that we have repurposed buildings and then repurposed them back. So, uh, you know, we still have those buildings. And I do worry in this long-range plan, am I reading it correct, that we're talking about going back out to the public for a, a new high school bond issue in April?
Eventually.
In April 27th?
Possibly. And again, this is a skeleton, nothing set in stone. And ultimately, it would depend on which route we go. And then we would have to kind of go end in line and go backwards to right now. But that was a thought, yes.
Uh, so, my, I would, I think someone earlier said that that would, it would be considered delusional. And I kind of tend to, to agree. Um, and the reason why I think that is, um, obviously, because of some of the issues that we ourselves have caused. And we're on the Board of Education, so we're just as guilty as everyone else. But also, if in less than 12 months, we're going to do all this change, we're, you're upsetting everyone across the district, all the voters across the district. And then to think that we'll be able to get 60% of the vote. And, and here's why I'm saying that, is because right after you, you do all these consolidations in August of next year, you're immediately, or perhaps before that, going to have to be talking about land acquisition and design. And those are exciting things. And it seems like it doesn't match that we're trying to make sure that we achieve accreditation, and we're trying to make sure that we achieve our fund balance targets. And then we're also buying something shiny and new and exciting. Like, that, that, that to me, I don't think is a good use of time. And that's my concern.
One more comment on tonight that I thought was a, a theme that came through here at Benton, um, which wouldn't necessarily have been the likely place. But I'd like for more, I'm going to ask you maybe to, to help with this. But it came up in one of our previous, um, board meetings about the fact that Bessie Ellison and Eugene Field are high-performing, um, schools. And there's, and, and what I'm continuing to hear, the feeling is, they're not just high-performing kids, they're high-performing schools from a cultural standpoint and other, and other things. So, I think we, I think it, it does give us pause to say, what we're, what we're closing here are two of our most successful schools. And there, there's nothing about that that doesn't feel weird to me. It feels a little weird. I'm not being protective of those schools. I'm just saying, I heard that from the public tonight, and I think we need to pay attention to that. And, and it needs to cause us to think through, um, are we missing anything? Or is there, or is something we can do to, um, help, help, um, make sure that we don't slip back with that kind of a change?
Can we, so to that point, can we look at any potential APR changes? I, I don't know if that was a factual statement or not. Um, I do also want to say, State Elementary is a great school. They have great students, staff, and families. And, um, I just want to make sure they, they hear that tonight.
I have a question. A person made a comment about 10 million deferred maintenance. Is that correct?
I'm not sure where they got that number.
Excuse me?
I'm not sure where they got that number. I don't know if it's pulling off of old Vision Forward documents, or, or is Casey Leach Brown? Any recollection you have from a 10 million deferred maintenance cost on High? Is that before the roof damage, maybe? I don't know.
Roof, 600,000.
Okay.
I, I have no, I don't have a word in that dollar, Andrew.
It just, um-
Thanks, Peter.
Caught my attention, and so I figured I would ask about it now. Okay, thank you.
I just have a few comments that I want to make. First of all, what, some of the overwhelming things I heard from people that makes my heart happy is the, um, the community and the culture that they were talking about in their buildings. And I really feel like that is due to staff, it's due to how we treat children, it's due to how we give children choices. There's a variety of different ways that culture can be created. And so, just because I'm in Hosea with one of my Missouri Western classes, that's a large school, that when the, the shift came for Lake and Prairie children to come there, um, that was a rocky road to start with. But what I've seen the two administrators do in that building, even though they have lots of children, is to create a community and culture in that building, even though there are lots of children. And, um, that, I mean, we had that when I taught at Edison, and I really think that opportunity is available for any school, anywhere in the entire world, to create that culture, because that comes from the adults in the building and the different things that they can do to create that culture. I think it also comes from how welcoming are we to have families come in the building, to offer opportunities for them to volunteer, to come to family events? All those kinds of things can be created, no matter what school we keep open, what school we keep closed. It doesn't happen overnight. It takes some time for that to happen. But I truly believe that that can happen. I truly believe that curriculum is the same in every school in our district. And those high-performing children are not going anywhere. Um, even if they end up being with a different group, those children, um, are still going to be in our district. And so, I think, I really think that's something we need to think about. I, I think this is a major and very, very difficult decision that I've lost a lot of sleep over, and I will continue losing sleep over it. I appreciate everybody who came out tonight and all the passion they have for our schools. Um, I really feel like we should be mostly concerned if nobody showed up tonight. That would be a great concern, because that would just show that our community doesn't support our schools at all. So, I think we've got to figure out how we wrap around, um, as a community, not just the school board, not just the administration, but as a community, how we, we wrap around and make that continue to happen. Because I really feel like it, it can happen at any, at any school, anywhere. Um, so that's one thing I'd like to say. And I am excited, all the people that came, and I have lots of notes that I may be able to go back and rehash and re, and relook at. I am looking at, one of the things that I've been looking at and having some ha-ha moments about since Friday is just the general boundaries that are on here. And I'm glad to hear that they can be a little bit flexible, because I have some concerns in general about, um, people who live, um, in an area of our town where they're not going to get a decision to get a new high school because they're going to be shifted south and they still live north. So, if we can maybe take a look at some of the boundaries of children that are going away from north to Benton, if that ends up being the school. So, I don't know if that is something we can look at, some shift in those boundaries. Um, let's see, I want to take a look here at my other notes. I don't know. I just have a lot of individual people I think I want to speak to between now and the time to make a decision. Some of the people that spoke tonight, and I am looking forward to seeing the third plan. But I agree that we have to be careful that, that we don't all of a sudden then have a fourth plan and a fifth plan, because at some point, we have to draw the line. And I think, um, unfortunately, we're in a situation where doing something is not an option. And we are the ones that are going to be steward to do that. And I think in the past, we've probably been as a district in that same position. I know I had my salary rose in three or four different times when I was teaching, and we never did anything. And I really think now, uh, we, we have to do something. And I really feel like that all of us, board members, administration, and everybody, really, our hearts really are about what's best for our community. And it's just going to be a very difficult decision. Change is my worst enemy. I don't like it at all. I've had several things in my life put on me that I didn't even have any control over. And, um, that's not fun, but eventually, we can work through that as a community and we support our kids. And I really feel like how the adults, um, are initiating conversations with children, who, they're not even capable of understanding really the big impact on what this, what this means for everybody from an adult perspective. Um, I think we have to be careful how we're engaging with children about this, because we can make a positive or we can make it negative for the kids in our community.
I agree with you on that. But I do have one more question that's been addressed tonight. I think I've asked it, and, um, I've been emailed it as well several times. The middle school, can you speak to the extracurricular activities and how the teams are going to work, especially with the 900 and the two smaller schools, and if there's going to be more teams? And where are they going to be playing? Can you know?
To add, to add to that, so the option two, gosh, I hit them all. Two is Lafayette Central.
Yes.
So, that plan has the three middle schools, four middle schools. What else do we have?
If it's Lafayette Central, then Benton is a large middle school in the south. Then it's Benton Central, then Lafayette's a large middle school.
Sorry, I've been looking at like every, all kinds of different stuff. So, there's so many plans. Um, how, how do we get to four to three?
Yeah, so the, the reason that was is to, you know, consolidate another building, because consolidating a, a building really is the catalyst to be able to, um, consolidate staffing. And what I mean by that is every building site that you have, uh, you have custodial staff, you have nutrition services, you know, you have to maintain those sites. You have to have front office staff and administrator. So, um, yes, if you keep all your buildings, you know, open, um, you know, you can still look to, you know, reduce staff to nutrition, but it's harder to find those opportunities. And so, by having one larger middle school, we, if you look in the facilities plan, I believe it has in there, uh, we look in the future to have two middle schools instead of three. So, that's just a transitional period, and so we could get to two larger middle schools. Um, one thing I will say, there's a lot of discussion about the extracurricular activities. Um, there's a couple of different things. One, uh, those two middle schools could co-op, um, if, if needed, to create one school they planned. Or I know that's done a lot in some other districts. And two, I think it would depend on what decision is, is chosen by the board and where those high schools, um, align with their conferences. And so, you know, the St. Joe's School could align with MEC with that second smaller school, or they could align with Suburban with that second smaller school. And so, there are larger middle schools in that suburban conference. And so, there's some opportunities there. So, it just depends on that conference alignment, I think, with the high schools, about what you could do with those middle schools as well. you can do with those middle schools as well. Is there a plan 100% laid out? No, because we are going to schools and talking to people and getting their feedback and getting their opinion, because that's what we want before something's put in place. And so, that process is going on. And for us just to say this is the way it will be, I feel like would be preemptive. We want to make sure we're listening and getting that feedback. Dr. Nolte led a great meeting with our athletic directors and the administrators of each building, at our high school level, to talk about that. You know, if Plan Two is chosen, if Plan Seven is chosen, if there is no decision and we're staying status quo, what does that look like for Sancho School District? So, had some great conversations to kind of line us up to where whatever decision's made, we quickly understand where people stand and what we need to do next.
So then normally, when terrific or schools, though, like maybe you did address this, like this over here, is there usually more teams that get put on so more kids can play?
Yes, absolutely. So you want to have the opportunities for everybody, whether it's a 900 kid school or a 300 kid school. And so, you have more teams. And at that seventh and eighth grade level, there are opportunities for a lot of people to play games, whether you, however deep you go with those teams. And so, you could absolutely have more teams from those larger schools, or like I said, co-op with those two smaller middle schools.
And then another question I wanted to address from the comments tonight, is the transportation, is the transportation cost going to go up going to these places?
That is a big what-if question. I can't give you that, because we don't have the exact population to show first to, to then run a bunch of scenarios in the routing software, to then show what that looks like. In some places, you're gonna be winners or losers. In some situations, you're gonna have people have less of a bus ride, and some are gonna have more. And so, I would say if there is an increase, it's not gonna be a huge increase. But you will, in certain areas, have kids with larger drive times, there's no doubt about it. In certain areas, you won't. It just depends on each person's situation and which plan is chosen. Honestly.
As you mentioned about the middle, I'm sorry, no, go ahead. As you mentioned about the middle school, about the eventual plan to go to two, is the plan to build a second middle school? Or, because we're looking at the capacity. But maybe I'm missing something.
No, you're not. You're not missing something. No, you're absolutely right. So if you went to two middle schools, you don't have the capacity. So you would have to add on a link to one of those, in one of the bonds down the road. So that's just, you know, rough draft, big picture. I'm gonna say thank you again to Dr. Guinness, because a lot of people pay outside groups to create these facility plans, and she was the big driver with that. So, appreciate her work with that. But that is something that you look at our desired state. Our desired state would be for two junior highs of seventh and eighth grade of somewhat equitable size to have equitable opportunities. We know in year one, it wouldn't be that way, because we have, the facilities we have to work with. But we do want to see a state where not only the high schools are equitable to have the same class offerings and situation, but also at the middle school level as well. And please, anybody chime in if I missed anything.
You're doing great. I would also say, I think we have to be mindful of our declining enrollment. That is a reality. And I think the Preston Smith study from 2019 is very telling. We have come in lower than the low rejection. And so I think we have to be very cognizant of that as we move forward and we're planning for facilities for the future. I think we have to use that data to guide our decision.
If this is too large of an ask, it's completely okay. But I know that, I know that that assessment, or whatever it's called, it was from 2019, and we've actually accomplished lots of upgrades in the meantime. Are we able to get a list of the upgrades?
Yeah, if you would like to deal with buildings again, and do an assessment, looking at the HVAC upgrades, looking at different other, whether it's a new Roosevelt Hyde or other situations, we absolutely could. You know, please note that DLR to this point has worked totally in kind. And so they have worked with the premise that we would, you know, pass upon, not pass upon. And so, they have not charged us time so far. But because we don't have any type of near-term offering that we're gonna have, we would need to start having their services charge to us to only be fair, because they have done so much for so long in time, that we would need to see that as a, okay, we don't have anything in the near term that we're doing, you're doing this for as a service.
Well, or even if we're able to get an unofficial list, like Hosea's information, a new roof in 2022.
If you would like the 2019 data, and then for us to give you qualitative data that says, okay, yes, here's the quantitative rate they gave the building, but qualitatively, we have new roof, asphalt proven, playground, to those, we can do that.
I think that would be helpful, because, you know, before I came on the board, I didn't know every building that got every single thing. And you constantly hear, they just closed it, and they just put this on it. And, you know, I know what we've done in the last three to four years, but to know that something happened seven years ago and caused X amount of money, I wouldn't have known.
Well, and me going through these plans all the time, I'm looking at that DLR report, in fact, I question so much about it. So when I look at those listings, that's why I keep questioning about Eugene Field and Betsy being higher rating. And then, when it's outdated, though, it's very hard for me to look at it. So it would be nice to have an updated list, so when I'm making decisions, there must be questions that have an updated information.
Sure.
Well, I do think we have to have some sort of answer for, we just put HVAC in this building, and now we're gonna close it. We just did this to it, and now, you know, the ELC, we just Webster, we just did some of these things. That doesn't bode well with financial, I don't know, even just financial literacy. It's like, okay, you did all this, and now...
I know hindsight's 2020, and I'm brand new. But, you know, if, when we ran the levy increase and failed, our Plan B was Central Lafayette, but it didn't have anything else with it. So, if Plan B would have had something expanded about these buildings with it, then some decisions about, okay, are we gonna put more money into this building if there's HVAC issues, if there's roof issue? Are we gonna hold off, because it's on Plan B to hold off? You know, and so, I'm just hypothetically speaking of why maybe some money was put into some buildings that maybe, you know, in the long range, it wasn't meant to be there. But my only hypothetical, just looking from an outside view, coming in brand new and trying to look through all that Vision 4 stuff, is that Plan B only had, okay, Central Lafayette High Schools, it didn't have a complete bigger part of it.
You know, I think there's another factor, and I was on the finance committee for a long time before, you know, we didn't have air conditioning forever, and that was a need, because our schools are modern. And so they retrofamed the schools, and along came ARCA money. So we're gonna, we spent a lot of money that we didn't have. And I'm not saying we misspent it, but we spent a lot of money, because it was available to us, to do things that, to these buildings, kind of saying, we have this money, it can be used for this, let's get this done and improve our buildings, probably without looking at what's a long-range plan and saying, we're gonna close this within the next two years. So, that was done. The windows in all the schools have been done. All those kind of things have been done, it's just the schools are gonna last for.
I need to add one more thing, and I know I say it every time, but I do think you guys, you guys have put a lot of work into this, and we see it, and I don't think any of us are sleeping well right now over this. We take it seriously, but we do see the hard work you guys are doing. And I think we all know we need changed. So I just want to know, we do appreciate it. And you have answered every single question I have asked. If I don't want the answer, you may answer it. So, thank you.
Absolutely.
Can I go back to boundaries and feedback? Because I just want to know if that's the will of the board, if we need to go back and look at something with boundaries that you mentioned earlier.
I was just looking at this little chunk here underneath, well, either plan, underneath where the Oak Grove boundary is, that little chunk there, and then this big gap. Is there any way that little chunk of children could maybe be included in that closer north boundary, so they're not riding the bus all the way down to Benton? That was just something I had noticed, especially, and thank you Jake for these maps, they are so much more helpful to be able to understand kind of where things fall. So that was a question, especially on the Benton Hyde, where it's got that little jutted place there, could it just include all of those kids back up with those north kids? That's just a question I had.
And I'll along that line a little bit, when I asked, say, what's our current lines? I think that schools like Pershing, Ellison, Hill, that we're considering.
Is there a reason for that boundary line? This little chunk, can it go up here, and this little chunk can go up here? Because of this gap?
Yeah, so that's Stonecrest.
Okay.
So if we do that, that's approximately 100 elementary kids.
Okay.
So, if we shifted that north, I mean, we could, but it would require basically a complete redraw, because we have to go all the way around.
Should, should, should.
Yeah, and shift it all over.
Okay.
But I mean, if that's the will of the board, then we could do that.
Jake, are you reading right here? That little chunk in there, Stonecrest area?
Yeah, well, so this chunk here, this Stonecrest, and he was asking about it going north.
Oh, I missed that. I thought we were like right there.
This chunk here, yeah, or any chunk, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
My only thing I think I already asked Jake up before is, my only concern with boundaries is that they're in walking distance with the school, that they stay within that school, the mile radius or whatever. I don't know if that's feasible of any sorts, but I mean, some kids, they walk because they don't have a ride. So if they come, if they're in walking distance of one school, I don't know why we need to bus them to another, if that makes sense.
Because the buildings are not where they need to be. And I think, having looked at overall these for how many years we've done this, because most of the buildings are in the center corridor, you're gonna have long commutes for kids. Like, some kids are gonna have long commutes. I guess my perspective would be with lower-income kids that are predominantly walkers, whose parents rely heavily on bus transportation, that we need to be mindful of that. So that's why I would be less concerned about where, about the Stonecrest. And I know this is not 100%, I know there's people struggling out there, but...
Well, I'm glad you mentioned that. Because I'm looking at the Plan Number Two, and I'm looking at the boundary, I know that in the plan, Edison feeds into Benton Middle School. And right now, I know that Edison only has two school buses, everyone else, car riders and walkers. And if you're putting Edison, if you're looking at only Plan Number Two, I mean, if you're putting Edison all the way to Benton Middle School, I think that that is not a creative big issue.
I guess I have a question, just because I don't know which map to find. On Plan Two, because I've looked at a whole bunch of two, does Bodie stay open or does Bodie close?
Bodie keeps open for both plans. It's under true.
Okay, thank you. I've looked at it, I can't remember what it tells what.
Hey, Donna, can we look at it honestly, so the public can feel too?
The maps?
Yeah.
I think they are.
These are?
I don't know if they are, but we can. Because I just got them out today.
Are they like on the day?
No, you just put these out today?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, anything else about Number Two? If there isn't, let's move on to...
Can I ask one thing, just so I have clarity here? So you want a projects list of things that have been done to buildings? And then, boundaries, we're looking at Stonecrest, we possibly are looking at Edison, is that consensus of the board for us to do that?
No, I'm not interested in that.
On either?
I am.
I mean, if we're looking at Stonecrest, I would look at Edison. I think that's only fair.
I just need consensus, if that's what we're doing.
But that's going to change all the way around, right?
It would. Yep. I don't know what that would look like, but Jake would help us with that.
And are we gonna see if it's feasible, or do we decide not to, looking at the kids who are in walking distance?
We can. The tricky part is open enrollment, too, so you have people who are living in Central's district and going to Lafayette, going to Benton, so that's kind of a, that's going to be thrown off in that data. But we can look at the case of eight.
If it's feasible.
Yeah. I'll do some research and see if we can figure that out. I'm not for sure. Thank you. Sorry, I just wanted to get clarity on what we need to do moving forward.
So we're gonna, we're gonna look at changing the boundaries, try to accommodate, we're gonna change the, we're gonna look at revising the boundaries of both plans, or is it just one plan that has that issue?
Just one.
It's just Number Seven?
Well, the Stonecrest would be both, but I think Edison would just be, sorry.
Yeah.
Edison would just be the one.
And Edison, if we want to shift Edison north, we would have to ship another school south.
And here's...
Yeah, or we could, Lafayette is 1,350 kids, if we just move it.
And so that's just my concern, is that, you know, we're gonna, and we've heard about this a lot, is that we're gonna take an affluent area and shift the whole thing to accommodate for that. That's, I just want to...
Can you remind me again? You mentioned about this area around it. What was your reasoning again? I'm sorry.
Well, I'm looking at, I'm just, and we don't have to do this, I was just noticing, there's this big, this is Plan Two, there's this big gap where no kids are. So we're busing these kids over this big gap south, when there's all kinds of kids right here, and we're busing them or moving them a shorter distance if we moved them across Frederick. That's all, that's all I'm saying.
Well, I think that is the primary thing, but I think it's also, those, and that's why I want to look at what's happening on the schools that are closing, because we're dividing Ellison with that, because those kids currently go to Ellison with the kids on the north side of that. And we're talking about what's good for the kids, what's good for the relationships. It doesn't, we don't necessarily need to divide those kids, and I don't want to do that.
Which might make it easier if we have to make that hard decision and close Ellison, if at least some of those kids and families could stay together. It's just a question I can ask.
I can understand that, like, only, I know we're not supposed to, you know, look at things as it's more of an issue X or Z, like, in Number Two, if we leave it alone, a lot of those Edison kids are not gonna make it all the way to Benton to go to middle school. It's a fact. I mean, a lot of them are, they're making it to Edison, and they live in their neighborhood. And so, I think, if we are gonna look at that, I want to look at keeping these kids in school. I mean, it's a priority.
Totally, I totally agree.
I just really, really worry about that.
I totally agree with what you're saying, because it is difficult for them to come to school, because there are only two buses there. I totally agree with that.
So is there any interest in bringing back a four-middle school model, or work beyond that? Because keeping Bodie, or keeping, keeping four middle schools addresses some of that area.
We can certainly do, you know, whichever you like. I know, just to give you a reason behind it, is, once you go to two high school model, you have this large building that has, you know, 900, 1,000, 1,100 capacity with your firm up in Lafayette. And how do you take advantage of that capacity? How do you become more efficient? How do you become more efficient? And so, that's why the larger middle school model was used to create that efficiency. You could keep it smaller, but then you're having, you know, 350 or 400 kids in a building that can have capacity of 900, 1,000, and it just has that 50%, 59% empty capacity of that inefficiency. That, that was the reason why.
I, I just have a, have a thought, and this, and I know we could have nine million plans, the longer this goes on, the more we're going to change our minds, I, I get that. What would happen if we looked at some of these, let's say we go back to the four-middle-school model, because I also have concerns about putting all those middle school children in one big building. Right now, my granddaughter's in an 800 kid middle school in North Kansas City, and it is, it is what it is, they have lots of teens and all that. But what if, especially when we're talking about getting rid of so many facilities, what would happen if we had that four, four school, or four middle school model, and we looked at taking, this, I'm just throwing this out here, TMC, some of these other little...
Peely.
Yeah, some of those little buildings that don't have children, and so that's not going to affect any children, because I know at one point in time, we talked about moving all that into Central eventually. What would happen if we moved all that into the high school, so we had kids and those kinds of things going on in the high school to utilize that extra space until we can get ourselves together and do, do, I don't even know what I'm trying to say.
We've talked about how maintenance, because I don't think Hyde is old, so I think maintenance building is ready to go. He's not...
I know it's really old.
He's not, it's really, it's really old. So, to that point, I'm, I'm less worried about filling it with kids, because we have other buildings that, you know, we could get rid of, Peely, we could get rid of the maintenance, rather than, we have 900 kids here and then two smaller ones here. And then, it, it solves some of your proximity and your geographical issues that we're talking about.
So are you saying whether it's Benton or Lafayette, that's not a high school anymore, that becomes a district?
Middle school.
That becomes a middle school?
Middle school and some of these district...
Yeah.
...outlying little things we have, and that would be a way to get rid of more buildings, to less, have less upkeep.
So looking at Lafayette, it's a three-story building, I don't know how you'd be able to accomplish it at Lafayette. I could be wrong, I'm just saying off the top of my head. If Benton is spread a little more horizontally, I think it would be tough to have a dual purpose of, you know, part kids and part district office facilities.
Well, but Peely, Peely is gonna be a lot of kid programming, and that's not gonna be trenches or, you know, all completely maintenance. My, my concern, I'll, I'll say, my, my biggest concern, besides the financial changes, is the not having that fourth middle school creates geographical issue for low-income kids, and size disparity.
Jake, one of that model, that four-middle-school model is actually a different option when we had one through seven, correct?
Yes.
You remember which option that was?
I think, uh, four, B, four E. Four B.
Was it five?
Four B, it was four B.
Was it seven, eight, two?
Four B, and I think three, unlucky.
Okay, so...
One or, one or, there was one both ways.
Yeah, it was, it was four B, it was four C, really, we kinda talked about repurposing Bodie or retiring Bodie, and four C as an option. So pretty sure it's four B.
It is four B.
And I, and I think part of the, the hard thing is, and I, and I get it, we're talking about all of the things, all of the work, and that we've been here for a long time, but I do think, you know, if we see the, if we see, okay, we went with this plan, but it's causing some problems in certain areas, then we should, but again, but I, I don't, I, if, if other people don't think this, then that's fine, I find it moving on.
And I, I agree with you too, and we could talk about this for a long, long time. I guess I'm just trying to, different things come along as we have more conversation for me, is just what I'm saying.
And I'm just wary of choosing a plan, I don't know if this is still on, I'm just wary of choosing a plan in order to make a move, and then the plan creates other issues in the district, I'm just not comfortable with that.
Well, and you're gonna have, to me, you're gonna have another vision forward in five, 10, 15 years, that says, how do we get these 900 kids out of this, how do we create, you know, we're, we're creating equity issues ourselves?
Well, we're gonna have another open forum in a week, and we're gonna have this same kind of discussion with different ideas have come up. And I, I hear us mix between, we need to do something and not pick it down the road, I've heard us say that before, and then, and then I also hear us say, well, we need to flesh out all of these nuances, and I, I don't disagree with that either. But we, we've gotta decide, and maybe, maybe it's becoming evident that we're not gonna make the October 27th timeframe.
That was my question.
Oh, you made it.
Yeah, and I think my, my issue, what I, what I would, what I kind of had in mind, or what my hope was, is that, you know, to me, once we got this plan, so I would, I'll clarify, still would like to see Plan E, but if we're only going with these two plans, then, to me, you have to go with the plan that gets us to our fiscal goal. So I, I would have thought that we would have come here and said, okay, we, we are evenly split, we don't know if we should do two or seven, or we're like, okay, we're able to say, the, the option that doesn't get us financially where we need to be, we have, just to be financially responsible, we have to stop talking about it. So then we move on to this plan, and then we say, okay, how do we tweak this plan?
Well, well, I would agree with you, because in all honesty, the reason of the urgency is over the finances, and so, if the reason over the urgency is money, go with the plan, you know, that's about the money. Okay, but the problem is, is that it's not a good enough plan.
But, but I, but that's my point, and that's my point with bringing up Plan E, is, I'd like, I would like to see that, so that we can either move it forward or put it to rest. And to me, with two and seven, if seven doesn't get us to 20%, then you have to put it to rest, and then you go to Plan Two and say, okay, we're on two, do we do four, how do we tweak Plan Two? But if we keep tweaking Plan Two and then going back to Plan Seven, is that what we're gonna keep doing? Because Plan Seven doesn't even get us there.
Dr. McGinnis, with all of this, wanting you to check this, check that, that should set that timeframe back some, wouldn't it? If we're going to spend our time tweaking and changing and bringing in a different plan, how does that, that should push...
Yep, it'll go back from that, and I, I think we also need to be mindful that we have people watching at home right now, who are staff, who are families.
Yeah.
And so, we have said, we are focusing on two and seven, and we can look at Plan E and, and see what we think about that. My concern continues to be, no, if we have no action, I think that's the worst decision for next year, just because of the financial position that we are in. None of these plans are going to be perfect, I said that earlier, I still feel that way. I think we are going to have to disrupt our system to move forward with change, and it's hard. I, I understand we went from four to three, that was the financial piece, that was the capacity piece, but now, I'm getting the sense like we're getting back to the drawing board, which I thought we didn't want to do back in August.
So I don't, I don't think, I don't think we're back to the drawing board at all. Like, to me, we have, we have two plans. One gets us financially where we, and, I don't, I don't like these plans, not that, you know, I don't, I don't love this, but we have one that doesn't even achieve the financial goal. So I would have thought, if it doesn't achieve the financial goal, we put it to rest, and then we take, okay, here's what we're doing with Number Two, how can we make Two better? Not perfect, but how can we make Two better? And say, okay, we've put Seven to rest, in the meantime, you, we look at Plan E, and if Plan E also doesn't beat Plan Two, then you, you know, process of elimination, but now we can move forward with Two and say, we're gonna make Two better. Like, so, so as the will of the board, because I also think, we don't, we don't have to keep moving forward saying, come, come, community, fight over Plan Two and fight over Plan Seven, if we know we don't even have four people on the board that are interested in looking at Seven, again, because of the financial impact.
Which holds the greatest opportunity for future building? And I think that's what the Plan Seven was supposed to be.
But that, but that feels to me, that, that, I worry about that, again, we're talking about the future of a bill, it, it feels like we are going bankrupt and then planning our, building our dream house. You know, it's not sincere, I'm like...
I just don't see it like that.
That's not the only thing that does, though, I think Plan Seven also, Plan Seven also says we're not, and, and I realize there's a, there's a positive to doing what you're saying, in that the board previously had said Benton's gonna close, it's just a tax. But the fact is, is that Benton's alone are quite a ways from the other two schools, and the, and they have two schools in different parts of town, has, has a better appeal to, to being close to each other. We've talked about transportation, all that kind of thing, and so I think that, I think that that's what keeps it alive, is the fact that geographically, it's better positioned than the two schools up north.
But, but it's not, it's not financially.
I'm just wary of...
I agree with that.
So, so that, so that is my question, I'm not trying to be argumentative with you.
Yes, you are, because what I'm saying, you've said that multiple times about that, I understand that, but the fact is, is that you asked about what are the reasons that we'd still be considering that. One is we've told the public that's what we're considering, and I think we ought to go ahead and follow through with that on the, the meeting we have next Tuesday, at the very least, and then if we're heading towards a decision, we, we've gotta start narrowing down what are the key factors, and finances is one of them, the school location and geography is another one.
And that's what we're currently doing. I know that when I look at the plans, I'm just wary of choosing a plan, and it's not as fiscally responsible, because I want a new high school in the future. To me, I mean, if it was like, a better plan, I'd be completely okay with it. And my issue is, as Ashley mentioned earlier, I mean, it's not gonna be like, it isn't gonna be a perfect plan. Well, well, okay, but we need a plan that's gonna make sense.
So tell me the plan that makes sense.
I don't know the plan that makes sense, because I haven't looked at all of the, all the plans.
My, my, my issue is, and again, just if you wanna think I'm being argumentative, that's fine, our own, the whole reason we are doing this so quickly is because of the financial implications if we don't. All, that's, that's, that's a sense of urgency, that's the cliff. By our own numbers, seven does not get us there, and two does. So if...
I think you just looked at both and make your recommendation, that I would like also to, Plan E, that we looked at as well, but I do wanna add, can you please talk about the staff survey as well? Does that, does anybody want to comment?
Uh, I did send you that qualitative feedback, it's very mixed. The, the survey question number three asked about the timeframe, it's almost split neck and neck, almost 50/50, that half of our staff believe that we should move forward for next year. I think we've been living in that state of unknown and uncertainty for quite a long time, about the other half want us to delay this a year. I, I was surprised, because I thought the majority of our staff would not want to move forward, but I think there's a better understanding of our current financial reality.
How many took the survey, and has it pulled up?
It's in between 300, 400, I'd guess about 350. I sent that to you guys Friday, I believe.
Yes, and I looked at all the comments, and I saw the reach off the bat. Did we ask them, it's fine, I just wanna try to miss it, did we ask their preference on which plan, or did you try and get a sense of where they were going?
We wanted all the pros and cons of both options, and so if you look at it, it's very split, it just is, and most people are advocating for their buildings, or having no change, others some say the press forward, that we need change to, to get a new high school. I think it's very, very mixed, if you look through all of those comments.
Thank you. Did the board answer your question on a direction?
Uh, I got Plan E, if somebody will send that to me, I don't have that in my inbox, but we will look at Plan E and try to determine if we think that is something that's feasible, happy to do that, it won't be in that format, so I have that. A projects list, we will try and figure out the K eight walkers, if they're in a mile radius, and how many of those kids would be impacted, still stuck on, we can look at boundaries at Stonecrest, I feel like I have at least some. I also think it's important that Mr. Moore's not here, and as our seventh board member, I feel like, and he needs to be moved in on this conversation and dialogue, just to know where he stands on everything, so I just wanna point that out as well. But we can look at, at these things. Our items for the next board meeting are due on Monday, so this gives us just a few days, the rest of this week, to try and get things accomplished by 10:00 AM on, on the Monday.
And you're looking at Edison as well, correct?
Yes, so, and you were talking Option Two going to the north, correct?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Got it. Now I'm good.
So does that, are you saying that, then you maybe need to push this decision a month?
I wouldn't recommend it, just because we, our staff need an answer.
Okay.
They do, our families deserve an answer, and if that answer is to delay it, then make that decision, but I, I think it's only fair that we communicate with our people and let them know the direction, and we have told them they would know on the 27th, so I feel like we need to stay true to that word, even if it is we're delaying it. But note too, that we have to make changes with staffing, with facilities, and so some of those pieces, to get the ball rolling, we need to know, we need to know in Octobers.
Okay, any additional questions on Number Two? And every time I ask that, there's additional questions, but are we okay for right now on Number Two?
All right. Moving on.
Tara. I'm gonna use the edge of the stage here as my platform. So I have two agenda items tonight, just for information and for you to have before the board member, before the board meeting on the 27th. The first item is a local compliance plan certification statement for special education. Every couple of years, the state redoes the state plan, and we have two options, we can either adopt the model plan, or we can create our own. It is always best practice to adopt the model plan from the state, that's what we've done for all these years, that is my recommendation, and so I've just attached that for you to look over, so that we can discuss it again on the 27th. And at that meeting, then I will ask for a vote, and ask for you to sign and adopt the model plan. Are there any questions about that?
Nope, I don't think so.
I'll go on to the second, the second item on there, and that is a contract for Row Health. It is a company that provides private duty nursing. So as many of you know, I've talked, well, for the past year and a half at least, about our shortage for LPN pares to support medically fragile students. And we have had an opening for over a year and a half now, we get people that seem interested in it, we offer them the jobs, and they then don't take it. And we have some significant students that need support, we are currently covering those with our float nurses, and we are gonna need those float nurses to cover for some staff that are gonna be out. One of the students has a trach, so what we've done is I contacted Liberty Public Schools, they use this company, we used to also use a private duty nursing company for medically fragile students as well, and they have been able to quickly give us a contract, and then also find an LPN para for us to support a student at Mark Twain for a portion of the day, and then after that, we would then go to Pickett and support those students in the medically fragile room there. And so that contract is attached, and I will just need to look over it, so we can discuss again at the end of the month and take a vote. Any questions about that? It's pretty straightforward. It's pretty straightforward.
I think so.
Okay, you're next. October budget.
All right, thank you. The plan is going to be enforced since July, right? So in July, when I talked to the board a little bit about what our end of the year ASBR might be look like, you guys tasked me with creating a budget reduction plan for this fiscal year. Of course, this is based off the original numbers. That was the June preliminary budget that was presented to the board. And so the reductions that you see on this is using that June preliminary budget as a starting point for the monies that have been reduced. So, uh, so with this plan, just give a quick little background. I know, you know, not to be hasty, we've talked about this a lot, you know, kinda where we sit right now, ten point zero two percent. You know, deficit of ten million over the last two years, that we need to look to reduce our budget to make sure that at least, you know, four million FY twenty-seven, three million FY twenty-eight, in addition to the two point seven four eight million that is part of district reduction plan, to start getting on a path back to twenty percent, which is board policy DIA. And I know that we have gotten in the minutia, if you could, a couple more pages, sorry. Yes, this slide right here. I know we've gotten in the minutia of, you know, talking about HVAC and spending there and, you know, some of the federal dollars that were delayed that now we're gonna get both those deposits here this fall. And this is really the overall reason why, you know, San Joe School District's in the position they are is because we have that declining enrollment. So you can see on the right-hand side, that is the legend or the key for what our enrollment numbers were. They were now below ten thousand. But yet if you look at our operating expenses, you can see that operating expenses continue to rise. So falling enrollment with rising operational expenses will put you in a position of deficit spending, which we've done the last two years, and we have to reverse that trend. So in other words, we have to right-size our staff and right-size our square footage so we're efficient, so we're matching our enrollment. You know, I, I know it's not a fun situation to be in. I know there's a lot of schools out there with declining enrollment that are facing the same thing. If you look at the national news, you'll see Austin School District in Texas is dealing with this exact same issue and talking about these exact same things. And so it's a tough place to be, but this is the overall. Yes, did some of those other things with HVAC and federal programs, you know, get us here maybe just a little bit quicker? That is true. But overall, this is the reason why we are at the reserve ratio that we're at is to continue to add FTE with declining enrollment. So we gotta reverse that trend, right-size our district for square footage and staffing. On the next page, how we got here, this talks a little bit about some of the things impacting us. So it's not only, you know, declining enrollment, but also our revenue. So you have Senate Bill one ninety, which is a senior citizen property tax cap. I'm not here to make an opinion on whether that's a good Senate bill or not. I'm just giving you the fact that that does reduce our revenue that we have for our districts. Budget spending management and inaccurate budget assumptions, we've talked about that. Our goal to make sure that when we present data in the future, that we're using better logarithms to create those projections to give better confidence. Again, every projection is a projection. You know, the weatherman's not always right, but we wanna have better accuracy than the weatherman. But, you know, you look, things change over time. So again, as you look at these numbers, if the state changes the funding formula, we're gonna need to rewrite all those logarithms to see what we're gonna be. But our fund for spending for capital expenditures, and then of course, our declining enrollment and our low attendance percentage. Cause now that's improving, so that's helping us. You can see our attendance continue to go up in those reports compared to years past. That's, that's gonna help us financially as well, so that's some great data to see. Then of course, the end of all the ESER funding that we had for the district. And of course, we've talked a lot about that delayed federal funding. So here's our budget timeline, if we can go to the next slide. And here's how we got to this spot where we're at. So stakeholder input, back in July, we went to our, our advent team, went to our department heads and said, hey, you know, our hiring plan is already in place, we already have our contracts in place for our teachers. We really can't look at staffing this year. We need to look at our purchase services and supplies. So where can we cut those things? What can we look at? How can we stay away from the core of the classroom? So that next spot, you can see that's where we're at right now, this October budget revision. And then if this is approved tonight, we're gonna continue to monitor closely FY twenty-six and see how it's trending. And then also look to give you a February and a June revision to give you updates as we go along. So the further we go on the year, the more data we have to show what we're trending and to give you that information. We have our finance committee revamped for this year. We've already had one meeting, we have another meeting tomorrow. And we continue to get input for them, not only on this, but on FY twenty-seven, which will be next year's budget. In the spring, we'll go like we normally do with our principals, our department heads, and talk through what FY twenty-seven looks like and then have a preliminary budget for you in June. So just kinda wanted to give you a quick peek of what that timeline looked like. So next slide, please. Key consideration in this budget, we wanted the least impact on students. We wanted to preserve student engagement and learning, focused on narrowing the budget projections for greater accuracy. Look for efficiency, starting with district office. Evaluate all third-party contracts. Improve transparency and communication. And then look at technology to defer like this. What's not included in this budget, so next slide on that, will be to increase any type of fees. We did not say, hey, we're gonna get out of this by, you know, charging more at the gate for athletic events or charging more for parking passes or things like that, increasing lunch prices. None of that was part of this plan. Reduction in force, we did not, there was no consideration to cut any staff. Building consolidation, that's not part of this plan. I know we'll talk about that for future, but no building consolidation is part of this plan. Student safety initiatives, those were held sacred. And then instruction and curriculum core materials were sacred as well. So the last page, this is a meat and potatoes. So on the left-hand side, you can see the areas we cut in district office. It starts with technology supplies at one point five million, technology purchase services, and then on down. Board of Education purchase services, human resources. So you can see all the different departments on the left-hand side that are part of district office and whether it was supplies or purchase services that was cut. And so that total for district office was just over three point three million or eighty-seven point eight percent of total of the budget reduction that we had for October. On the right-hand side, you see what was cut from the secondary level and elementary level. There was a little bit of staffing of what you see in there. If there was staffing, it was through reorganization, meaning, you know, someone might have moved schools where you had an opening or had a math opening and a high school science opening and was able to kinda repurpose some folks that were already in another building. And so it, like I said, it had nothing to do with any type of reduction in force, but just reallocation and not having to rehire that position. And so you can see at the high school level, we were just under four hundred thousand dollars in savings or ten point five percent of the budget reduction. And then sixty-four thousand for elementary. So you're probably asking, well, Robert, if that comes up to three point seven, why is it only saving two point seven? What does a million dollars of budget overage mean? Just to be upfront, transparent, we had some curriculum pieces that we bought. The business office thought it was gonna be paid for over five years. There was miscommunication between the company and our business office on what that payment looked like. Because those materials were a lot of print materials, they incurred a lot of those costs upfront, so they really could not accommodate a payment plan over three or five years. And so we did take that, that hit upfront for that. But that also means that we won't have that cost going forward because it is paid up for all, all in front. So there's a good pros and cons to that. So all in all, the budget reduction will be a little over two point seven million for October. And then if you go back to the main ledger sheet to shows what that means for us, you'll see that that puts us in the black predicted for this year in funds one and two by eighty-three thousand. So eighty-three thousand and a hundred and fifty million dollar budget is, is small amounts either way. And so basically, we're looking at a flat budget this year, if they project out the way we see them right now. And so this two point seven million dollar reduction would help us get to that, that balanced budget for this year. I do want to note, to be fair, that we do have multiple years of federal deposits in this year. And so revenue for this year is higher than typical year. So we will need to look for next year to continue to make adjustments because we won't have three years of federal payments next year like we had this year because we were able to get those wrapped up from the federal side and get those payments in. So I know it's getting late, happy to take any questions.
I just have a little question. What's the amount of the extra payments in this year again?
For federal, so the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four year and two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five year for both of, all of those title funds.
Is that about forty-five million for each one?
Close to five.
In between nine to ten million dollars of extra revenue this year then?
Correct.
Okay.
From previous years of title funding.
So can we go back briefly?
Sure.
To the budget, right?
Yes.
So we made an internal mistake and it created a million dollar budget.
So the, basically the thought was that we'd be able to spread that out over a five-year period. Many times with larger purchases, whether you're talking about facilities or curriculum, they will, they will phase that into like five individual yearly payments. And so in this situation, that was the assumption going into this year for that particular curriculum piece. And it turned out that that was not the case. And so I, I wasn't here for those conversations, you know, with that provider. But that's my understanding and I'm reading that secondhand. So like I said, it was paid up for all front, so yes, we took it on this year, but we won't have any payments for it in future years. But I did approach the company, emailed them, and then Stacia also talked to the company as well to see if we could get something worked out.
It is our new core ELA resource and it is a six-year purchase. And there was some breakdown in communication about whether that was gonna be divvied out between the years or if it was gonna be paid up front.
So I'm gonna, I just am very frustrated by this information. I think that we had a mistake made over the summer, a couple of mistakes that led us to our current dire fiscal situation. And now we're learning of another mistake to the tune of a million dollars. And that is very, very concerning to me as it likely should be. And I, I, I'm not, I'm not trying to point blame to anyone, but I think when the community sees us have a conversation and this information happens and then we quietly just turn the page and move to the next item, they have every right to be raging pissed off. And that is why I get very frustrated when we're talking about the financial debacles that happen and then we're talking in the same meeting on the same evening about a shiny new school. It is, I am, am so frustrated. And I think that our community is frustrated and they have every damn right to be, to be frustrated. And if I was then, I would be calling for all of our resignations. That's, that's what I would do. But if you guys are okay with it, then we can move on.
Stacia, was it the resource that we were told we have the bond funds to cover that? Is that the resource that we were referring to?
No, it's the bench parking. That means.
Here's the shiny light of this point. We have the extra title money, this that is in, currently in our budget that we haven't had for the last two years.
That's correct.
And so this year, we're going to have that money. And I'm not saying what happened is okay, please don't hear me say that. But what I'm saying is if we're going to have an issue like this, this is the time to have it because now we have the title money in our budget.
Well, some lost of this is...
Question statement all the same.
One of the reasons we got the price we did is because we did pay it for upfront. And when I went to negotiate, they said, well, you got a discount on your pricing, you did pay it upfront. So there was, there was no funds lost. Basically, that resource is paid for upfront at a discount. Where when business offices budgeted during June of FY twenty-six, they had spread out equally payments over six years. So really, it was just how it was to be paid and what funding structure it was and no more, no less.
Are we able to get some? I guess my problem is, it's, it's a mistake we never knew about and then like, and I understand it's like miscommunication, okay, but is there a way to make sure that this is not occurring? Like, like, it's a million dollars.
This is also a decision that was made prior to the reality of our finances. So had we known we were at ten percent, we probably wouldn't have spent this.
Yeah, during this time, you had a narrative that you were, there'd be no less than twenty percent, you know, next school year. And that was the narrative.
Right, and, and I understand, I understand all of that. I understand all of that. But we already admitted that we made assumptions about how this was gonna be paid and there were miscommunications. And I don't know that there's going to be a lot of public trust instilled in the statement of, well, because we messed up last year and that's coming in now, it'll take care of the mistakes that we make this year. This is a hundred and sixty-plus million dollar organization and we should be doing better than that with public dollars. And that's, I'll, I'll leave it at that.
Are you just not getting this information?
I think the thing is here, what maybe we're trying to get to is that I know this is before you, that these mistakes were made before you. But is there a common denominator that's causing these mistakes and are we taking care of this internal process?
Right.
That's a tough question for me to answer because I am not here throwing men in the bus. I'm looking for the future and how we can be better. And one of the things I have on this list is transparency. And that's why I put it right on there, is a budget overage and told you exactly what it was and exactly what happened. Because I want people to have the trust that when we make a mistake and we're human, we own up to it and say it instead of the other way. And so I'm here telling you a mistake was made, people are human. I, if I, you know, there's been a lot of mistakes made in the past. This one is the least concerning of mine because we got a discount to pay for this upfront. You know, there's other things that have happened of saying we'll be at twenty percent and it'll be at ten. I mean, that, that is the larger miscalculation that I see. And so, you know, I know this is just the cherry on top. I get that, but please see this as someone trying to be transparent and...
And I do, and I think you. And I'm not telling you to throw anybody under the bus, that's not where I'm getting at. I just wanna make sure this is an internal process that needs to be fixed, that we're fixing it.
Right. You know, I knew I had this job in April, so I'll say I should be doing more in my free time to try to see what's going on here before I start July one, so I'll put it on me.
I just have another question about this. Have we known about this long?
We've been, so this was, came to life somewhere around August when school was starting. And so we were negotiating with the vendor to see if we could set something up to span that over five, six years like we thought it was and was having some negotiations. And so this, this could have been a non-issue, but we wanted to see how those things went with the company first. And when we got nowhere, then now that's when we put it in the budget amendment and put it for you.
Was there like a problem in the contract or something about to miss under...
Do you think about the... No, the contract was presented to the board and approved by the board in, I think it was April. We had talked about the purchase of the ELA and the, the savings of, by going through a six-year. So, yeah, that was, that was approved then at that particular point. And as far as, you know, we, we had multiple meetings about, you know, is, is the ELA core resource something we wanted to move forward with? And yes, everybody was in agreement with that.
At the time of the contract approval though, did we know that we were going to pay all of it now? Or was it understood that we were gonna pay over six years?
I think it was presented from a six-year purchase.
And I'm gonna make mistakes. I'm, I'm not perfect. I'm gonna make mistakes. I'm gonna be, I'm gonna tell you soon as I know it, I'm gonna let you know, and we're gonna try to correct it. And so I, I don't want to, you know, my time will come, all I can stick to. But I, I will always do my best, have people double-check my work, you know, collaborate with those folks so I'm not on an island and make sure that... folks so I'm not on an island, and make sure that we're doing everything we can to improve our process and procedures and just be transparent about it.
And we thank you for that.
I appreciate that.
And this is what's going to be paid no matter what, correct?
It was.
I mean, so that isn't what bugs me whatsoever, but I can see, like I said, is that this is an internal process that we can fix what's going on so we don't have these issues going forward, that's all.
And I get your frustration of hearing one thing and then never seeing another. So even though we're still getting the resource we paid for, I totally get it. It's frustrating to see, okay, here we go again, you know, something different than what I was told, so I get that frustration, I hear you.
Okay, I just want questions about the budget amendments. Well, I have a little thing, I just wish that, I'm sorry, I forget about this thing, I just wish that if there is an issue, it's just kind of uncomfortable to learn about this on camera, and we knew nothing about this, you know, and so like if there is an issue, if we're told in like a timely manner, it's my only request. I mean, even if it's like a day earlier, you know, I mean, at least, at least it's no surprises during the meeting.
Sure, I agree. One thing I did want to know on that budget document is that's the budget reduction plan. You know, I kind of did want to just throw numbers on paper, I wanted to give you the process and what the thought was behind it. The other document in the agenda is the actual budget document that you guys are used to seeing for amendments, that shows previous years, shows this fiscal year, and then on the back, it shows your revenues and expenditures broken out by fund, and then what those final year transfers may look like with a ending reserve ratio. So just want to make sure you guys saw that in the agenda as well.
Okay, moving on. Mr. Correll?
I'm going to defer to Dr. Hitchford as well on this one, but we are presenting a updated job description for the coordinator of federal programming. Part of the federal programming program evaluation report was to recommend the improvement for a succession plan. We are asking for this position to move from the support staff's salary schedule to a coordinator's salary schedule, and this is funded 100% by title dollars, so it would not cost the district any money.
One importance of this piece of getting this person hired now is the succession planning that Mr. Correll was talking about. So that would allow these folks to transition, enroll, you know, knowledge transfer, getting used to seeing the process. We're going to have a tiered monitoring review in the spring as well, so they'd be able to participate in that process, and so when July would come around, they'd hit the ground running. The reason I think this position would be so valuable is I talked a lot about, you know, having those funds delayed and what that was, and that was a $400,000 cost to the district. And so, you know, we've had this position posted for some time, and the, we've had a very, very, very tiny number of applicants for this position. And just, you know, looking at how this is structured in some other districts, we feel like having a coordinator that has, you know, experience in education and federal programs and things like that would help be strategic about maximizing the dollars that we can get for title, instead of just the status quo of what we can get from title. Because we've had carryover every year, and if you're being as efficient as you can in title, you should, you should have that be a very small number in your carryover. And so I feel like this coordinating position will help us maximize those dollars and the results that we get from the staffing members that are in the schools under the title program.
Is this a new position or a replacement?
It's a replacement. Now, there is a little bit of overlap, so when we hire this person, these people will be overlapped for a little bit for that knowledge transfer, but it is not a new position, it is replacing that existing position.
Yeah, that was part of that succession plan. A current employee will be retiring in July.
I had asked prior to the meeting what the change in the cost would be, and I believe it was $20,000, is that correct?
Approximately, depending on how many years of experience a new person has, but looking at the schedules, about a $20,000 difference.
So as I shared with you before, so that you wouldn't have a surprise, I worry, I understand how this position will be funded, I understand that we'll receive more revenue so it won't affect necessarily the budget issues and the fund balance that we're talking about, but I greatly worry about adding more money to an administrative position when we are talking about cutting positions and attrition and things at the building level. So that is, that is my concern. But I understand how it's funded, I understand the need, I just think that the way that it will look to the public is not good.
And I don't disagree with you. It's bad timing.
I mean, you mentioned about an overlap. Is that an overlap of like a month, a couple of months?
All depends on when we would hire the position, we'd have to interview, we'd have to go through that entire process. We would, we would think maybe first of the year.
Well, I guess what I'm asking is about the amount of extra funds this is going to cost with two people for one position. Is there projected expense?
Yeah, it all depends on what that admin pool for this budget year approved, so I will need to, I do not want to give you a correct answer right now, so let me find the information for you and see if this position is allowable for this year. I know it is 100% for next year, it's very good, and then that way I can give you a more accurate information at the next meeting, if that's okay?
Yes, I appreciate that.
All right, thank you.
So, Mr. Correll, this is just to attract people who are going to apply? Is that the jump in salary or the jump in position?
I would agree with that.
It will look rough to our constituents, to the community for sure.
It feels rough.
We just worry that in the long run, we do not want, well, sometimes no words is better. We feel like this is the best position for our district to maximize our federal programs to have a person in this position.
Okay, are there any additional questions about item number six? And it's going to be an agenda item at the next meeting, correct?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Okay, let's move on. That's also you, Mr. Correll?
Yep, all right. Policy GCPCC, early notification of retirement, so the policy actually states that the district may offer an early notification of retirement and send them a $1,000, so that's why every October it gets brought back up. The board gets to decide whether or not to offer the stipend to staff. This is for certified positions only. If you guys do approve to have this again this year, our certified staff have until the last student contact date in November to notify us and the retirement system that they are going to retire after this school year. In the past, we have offered a $1,000 stipend. I will say that we will recommend this incentive for October 27th. Since we're looking to use attrition for our model to consolidate staff, this will help us prepare a little bit more for the next school year as well, if you guys do choose to make a decision.
Thank you, Mr. Correll. Are there any questions about this?
Well, I just have a question. Do we know an average of what the cost of this is from one year to the next?
Yeah, so the last three years, my team put some numbers together, so the last three years, the average has been 19 staff members who have retired and taken this incentive. We anticipate possibly with some of the changes that we may lose some staff to some early retirement or some things like that, so we are anticipating between 19 and $25,000. I think the most it was a few years ago was $37,000.
Okay, are there any additional questions? Thank you, Mr. Correll.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Correll.
All right, I'm going to give a special shout out to Hosea. They have been working hard with their literacy grant, the CLSD grant, and in Dr. Adams' work, she shared that Hosea was awarded that grant, and in the, in the planning stages with DSE and the RPDC, Hosea has selected to support in-classroom coaching for teachers in support of that new ELA resource, and so what the consultants would do would go in and help teachers utilize that new resource in the classroom. They would model first what that lesson or the resource, how is that best fit in our literacy structure, and then they'll come back and provide some feedback for our teachers, and our teachers will then carry out what they observed and give some feedback there. So Justin McCarthy, I promised him, and his team that I would present the work they're doing down at Hosea, understand this is all pigoted through that literacy grant, and it was shared with the RPDC and DSE, this was the direction, and everybody felt really solid with this work. It is in the classroom, and that's where the work definitely takes place.
Thank you, Mr. Correll. Are there any questions? All right, if there are none, Mr. Casey?
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Right now.
Right now.
Justin?
Here you go.
All right, first item is change order for Oak Grove playground service. This service is, is to be done instead of the rubber tile originally there. The reason for that being is that tile is not available until mid-winter, which puts the timeline into spring, and would not allow the delays, basically, the playground in another spring, they would not have access to it. The alternative is to put in a turf. That's a difference, not like our field turf is totally different, but put in a turf playground surface, which actually is a higher impact rating, it's higher, it's better overall. The overall cost additional would be $9,427, and that's what gets done right towards the end of this month.
Any questions? If there are no questions, you can move on to the next item, Mr. Casey.
Okay, change order number two is for various items, it's some curbing caps, some extra dampers due to some exterior or some interior wall penetrations that we had to make. Some of this is due to the units being backordered as far as the curb caps and everything. And then the other part of it is labor for some wall penetrations to access the principal's office and a couple other office areas that utilize that more universally in scope. That amount would increase would be 21, well, $20,976.96.
I just have a couple of questions. At which school is this?
Sorry, this is, three options are Mark Twain and one option is Edison.
And if this amount's not known, if you're able to get it to us later, I know that there's been lots of change orders lately, are you able to give us an amount, or is it updated on the webpage about?
It's not 100% updated. Right now, we're right around $140,000.
Of change orders?
In $20 million.
Casey, would you repeat that?
Yeah, currently out of the $20 million budget, all the projects across the board, from instruments to everything, we're about $140,000 under.
Under.
$140,000.
Under.
Under, yes.
That's the operating order.
Yes, I know. And we'll have that document updated before you would actually take action on that. That way you have the whole month's worth of expenses and invoices and change orders all updated at once.
Okay, are there any additional questions on this item? I appreciate your time, Mr. Casey. I appreciate everybody's time. It has been a long night. Our next board meeting, well, actually, our next event is next Tuesday on the 21st at Lafayette. Half after 5:00 is the town hall, and then after that, two weeks, it's our regular meeting of the board. And it will be, excuse me, in the main gym at Central High School, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, perfect. And is there a motion adjournment? Thank you, is there a second? I've got a second. Could you call the board, please?
Yes. Ms. Miller, Ms. Williams, Ms. Jazzy?
Yes.
Ms. Crone, yeah, Ms. White, Ms. Corrigan.
Okay, this meeting's adjourned.